The date is Tuesday, June the 24th. So we will go into public comment first. And we have, let's see, Mr. Zuma Dogg would like to make a public comment. So please come forth.
Thank you very much. Just here to say some obvious things here since this is energy and environment. First of all, I'm concerned about the water. The water reports about the Sierra snowcaps possibly not providing as much water as we're used to. At the same time with density, I know it's a touchy subject, but a lot of, you know, big, high-density buildings being built around. I'm very concerned that there's not going to be enough water for these projects, very seriously. And then also, to let people know if they're listening on the phone, and again, this is nobody's fault up here or anything, but DWP, they're talking about 3% rate increases over the course of the next three years, 9% over three years. That's what the public's expecting, ratepayers. I am told it's going to be more in a 30% range over those three years, if not a lot more. 30% just, you know, is what it's going to be. Not factoring in problems like the Sierra snowcaps, higher demand, not enough. So we could be looking at easily 50% increase over the next three years. Again, it's not a criticism of council or even DWP, it's just to alert the public. Also regarding the, you need to be prepared because at the same time, people are getting hit with high gas prices and hyperinflation everywhere. You know, here's going to be a quadruple whammy. And then also, with the infrastructure, there was a rate hike recently, promising infrastructure upgrades. We're not going to, it's not even going to come close. Again, nobody's fault up here, it's not to be critical, but it's just to prepare people because after 50 years of neglect, you can't just do it all at once like this. And, you know, it's not even close to what's going to be able to be done. So we are going to have major, major water crises in this city. Please act prudently. Dr. Deming could be of assistance, hopefully. And if nothing else, just for people to realize, you know, start saving, cut down on frivolous things because we're having huge increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Daniel Weisman, and I have a card here from Paul Scott, and he has not indicated, does he want to speak during public comment? Okay. Mr. Weisman.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I'll let your quorum get seated. Hello, quorum.
Do you want to go ahead, or we're going to run the clock?
All right. With your indulgence, I came to talk about Item 3 and 4, but the personal requirement to leave at 3 o'clock, looks like it won't happen. And those are, of course, the restructurings. You have before you a document, four pages, which starts with the word "Friends" and ends with my name. It has a graph on its second page that I want to draw your attention to quickly, talking about the ways in which the tiering and the zoning is going to affect the new rates that customers are going to be receiving. The documents that were provided by the Department of Water and Power indicate that the base rate is not going to be changed. I think it takes some clarification as to why that is so. It also indicates that these bounces up, which you can see if you want to look at the graph that I have before me or the one in front of you, is not going to happen until next year because of delays in getting it through City Council. Those increases in rates, which are the tiering and zoning problems that are being proposed, will not take effect until next year. We won't know what effect they have, whether they really are revenue-neutral or not. The other part of this graph shows that the E-CAP, the Energy Cost Adjustment Factor, is certainly the largest increase in cost that customers are going to see. And the new cost, the reliability cost adjustment factor, will start whenever the passage of these ordinances finally gets done. I do hope you'll have a chance to look at this with more care, or ask one of your staff members to look at it with a little more care. I think you'll see that there are some serious questions that haven't been answered as to just how this rate increase is being applied.
Thank you.
I thank you for allowing me to say that at this time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Paul Scott.
Thank you very much. This country was built out on cheap energy. You know, for the past 100 years, we've expanded our suburbs far away from the city centers and jobs because we had cheap energy to do so. We've built inefficient houses, inefficient vehicles, and we're running them, we're burning up oil, we're burning up electricity as though it were worthless. That is the past. The future will be much more efficient. The DWP's grid mix is some 47% coal. Now, the reason you've been able to keep your rates at 10.5 cents a kilowatt hour is because you buy a lot of cheap energy. Other people are having to pay the cost of that cheap energy with their health, with their lives. People living downwind of the coal plants are suffering greatly. We all know that. That's going to stop. So you're going to have to raise the rates. That's a known, and it's how you raise the rates that makes the difference on whether you are able to allow poor people to go on existing without impacting them too much. So going to tiered rates is a very good idea. It should have been done years ago, but you're finally doing it. Three tiers is a good start. Five tiers, as the IOUs, the investor-owned utilities are doing, would be even better. And keep the rates low for the first tier. Give them 500, 750 kilowatt hours, whatever it is, but keep that rate very low. Ramp up rapidly in tiers two and three, particularly tier three. The people in tier three are going to be wasteful people. I see them all the time in my business selling solar. So if you're in the business of selling solar, you know how much energy is wasted out there. And the people in DWP territory tend not to buy solar systems because their energy rates are so cheap. In Edison territory, it's the complete opposite. So I strongly encourage you to go with tiered rates and time-of-use pricing. Implement it quickly and dramatically. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no further cards here for public comment. So we will now close the public comment portion of the meeting and go to the agenda. And the first item is item number one.
Madam Chair, item one is a communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Ms. Maria Armoudian to the Environmental Affairs Commission.
Okay, Ms. Armoudian. Tell us, or tell the committee, what do you think the biggest problem is facing the department at this time?
I think the biggest problem facing the department is that it's been kind of relegated to deal with small piecemeal aspects of environmental issues. And that if we could incorporate the environment throughout the city of Los Angeles and have environmental considerations permeate every department, that would be the best opportunity for the, this department to interact and build upon what it's been doing.
Let me ask you a quick question. I guess you were in Washington, DC in the last couple of weeks lobbying on legislative issues?
No, no. I was in Washington, DC working on my PhD.
Okay, so were you, were you working on any legislative matters on behalf of the city?
I would have, but they didn't have one for me.
They didn't have any, what?
No, I met with our lobbyist, and I said, hey, by the way, I'm here, I'm interviewing chiefs of staff throughout the Congress and talking to them about all these things. If you want me to lobby, I'm here. But he didn't have anything for me. We did have a good lunch, though.
Okay, okay, okay. What are some of the major initiatives you've worked on or put in place since you were appointed to the commission?
Well, when I came to the city of Los Angeles, there were a number of things that I considered to be high priority, and the number one was climate change. Now, initially, when I got here, it was not really on everybody's radar the way it is now. I think the city had not begun to take it up. The department was a little bit, you know, concerned about taking up something that big. But then the mayor, President Clinton, the council, kind of stepped forward, decided to take it on. And so that has become, as you know, the department's big issue. Now, we're supposed to be, and are, moving forward on the public participation plan for the Climate Change Action Plan, which is very exciting, and we're kicking off on Thursday. I hope you're all sending deputies. So that's been the primary thing. As part of that, I, and I've met with President Garcetti's office on this, and I've been meeting with some of the others, a huge problem in the city of Los Angeles, not just with climate change, but with air quality, you know this, I don't need to tell you this, is the transportation issue. I mean, it's more than 50% of our emissions. We've got to get people out of their cars. I'm a transit rider. I take it 75% of the time. I don't take it at nights because of the considerations. But, you know, I see what the problems are, and I've been trying to move forward various aspects of it, working with a couple of transportation commissioners. There's another commissioner within our own environmental affairs that I've been working with. We've met with Richard Katz on this. I met with President Garcetti and his staff about ways to, A, get people out of their cars. Initially, I was looking for incentives such as tax break. I got Assembly Member Paul Krikorian to take up a bill that we were considering the city of LA being a sponsor for. That's what we had worked on. Well, guess what? The budget took a big spill. We really couldn't move that forward. But we have another unfortunate thing which has become an incentive, and that's gas prices. So now I think the big trick is to adjust and to find ways to fix the small problems to make the transit usable. For example, people don't have places to put their cars. So people that want to take transit don't have a way to go from point A to point B because there's nowhere to leave their car. There are a few exceptions. The commuter express has a fabulous program. I take it every day to USC. They have park-and-rides. They have sharing agreements with churches. They have sharing agreements with other outfits. We don't have that as much around things like the red line. When I spoke with folks about the parking meters around the red line, changing them to 10 hours, I don't know if it had anything to do with me, but they're doing it, and I'm very happy about that. So that's kind of one of the primary things. Takes care of climate change to some degree, takes care of other air emissions, the asthma problems, some of the environmental justice issues that are related to that. There are other big, huge things that I've been talking about that are getting into the plan. One is working with large institutions, because you get more bang for your buck. We've got them all over the city of Los Angeles. We've got the universities, we've got big corporations, we've got Oxy, UCLA, USC. And if we can get them all to buy in and to work on this together, then it becomes lots of bang for the buck. And the other is, of course, water, because we use so much energy for water, transportation, treating, that sort of a thing. So these are the things I've been putting forward. I don't want to keep talking because I know you have other things.
We have Mr. Garcetti here and Ms. Grue, who have any questions.
... working closely and will support your renomination.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, as music to my ears, I chair the Transportation Commission.
Yes, that's right.
And so we frequently talk about the importance of the linkage between environmental issues and transportation. And you're so right as far as also having access, taking the Universal City subway, getting there at 7:35 and all the parking spaces being gone.
North Hollywood.
North Hollywood.
Yeah.
There are disincentives to taking public transportation, the way in which we can do that. So you're right, the sustainability issue. I think the challenge in the next year, of course, is that we put forward to the Environmental Affairs Department is the linkage between, there's been some suggestions of it combining with others, and, you know, how do we get environmental affairs to the level of which other departments respond to them versus it being an island? And that kind of coordination. And so we look forward to the feedback and relationship with environmental affairs to say, what's our future? You're right. Although those of us on this committee have been environmentalists and working on issues, the public is catching up and I think...
And being forced to.
And being forced to. Ridership is up 12%,
Yes.
But based on the last six months of the gas prices going up. So whatever the incentives or disincentives are, seize the moment where people are willing to change their behaviors and to do that.
Absolutely.
So I look forward to working with you on your appointment.
Oh, yeah.
You clearly have worked very diligently on this issue and support your renomination.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. So without objection, recommend approval on item one. And, oh, before we close off, Mr. Zuma Dogg filled up.
I pulled it.
All right, all right. Mr. Dogg has waived his request to speak on item number one. So without objection, we'll approve that. Recommend approval on item number one. And then go to item two.
Item two.
Thank you.
Communication for the mayor relative to the reappointment of Mr. Nicholas Patzouris to the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. He's here as well. And Madam Chair, both these items are before the council tomorrow.
Great. Okay. Why don't you tell us what you think the biggest problems are facing the department today?
The biggest problems and challenges, number one is the infrastructure upgrade. The ratepayers and you entrust us with billions of dollars. And the department has not, we know, for the last 30, 40 years embarked on such a massive project. So the management of that project is going to be very important so that you, the council, three, four years from now, are not confronted with a situation where we spend the money and you do not fulfill the objectives. Number two is the renewable power resources. The department, it will be successful, I believe, in fulfilling the mayor's and yours vision of 20 by 2010. However, again, we are talking of multi-billion dollar investment. We have embarked on uncharted territories. So it's going to be very important that costs are controlled so that the taxpayers, ratepayers, four, five years from now, are not going to be confronted with huge rate increases because, as you know, the RPS is paid through E-CAP. Water and conservation, of course, it's very important. And again, the mayor and council has embarked on a new frontier, and that's recyclable water. And continue, continue, and I have, I'm very pleased to report that this commission and working with management is starting to gain the confidence, started. We have not completely gained the confidence of the public. Our contracting process is very transparent. And we, as a commission, we are very, very protective of the ratepayer and the little guy. Because the voiceless and the defenseless cannot afford high-power lobbyists and attorneys to take care of the business. And offline, and Madam Chairwoman, I have discussed with you a couple of things that often we forget the little guy. So some of us at the commission are very vigilant on that aspect. Hiring, as you know, to bring our infrastructure up to par requires trained personnel. To train personnel takes three, four years. Once, we pass them to the civil service. And I have to commend the civil service of the city that, working over the last two years, you know, we have a committee that Mr. Nahai and I started about 2 and 1/2 years ago. We have broken some of the roadblocks and making progress. But as late or as early this morning, in my committee, we have approved 768 positions for this year, or seven or eight, and we're only successful to hire about 550 people. So briefly, that, some, many challenges, but offhand, that's what I see.
Quick question, as I am curious about this. In the budget that the commission just approved, the funding, was the funding for the diversity hiring left out or taken out? Or what was the status of that?
On what?
But didn't you just approve a budget last week?
Yes.
Okay.
The budget was approved as presented by staff.
Okay, so was that left out? Was that part of the budget?
Yes, it was part of the budget.
Diversity hiring is still part of the budget?
Hiring.
Is it diversity hiring? What do you call the program?
I'm not clear.
Mr. Nahai, you want to...
Maybe he can help me.
Madam Chair, I'd like to...
Why don't you put the mic so we can have you? Or is it for procurement?
Yes, it's, the program has to do with diversity training.
Okay.
Especially in the procurement process, and it was approved by the commission, and it is part of the budget.
So is it still part of the budget?
Yes, indeed.
Okay.
But, a good point. As you know, the little guy, again, cannot compete for big contracts. We get repeat after repeat, at least as long as he's been there for three years. The usual suspects, I go, multimillion-dollar contracts, and the little person cannot qualify because the city has onerous requirements for, to comply. So Mr. Nahai and the commission is working to break down massive contracts so small businesses also can participate, MB and WB. That has been the problem, and the problem persists as we speak. I mean, just last Tuesday, we had a long conversation, contract of 45 million because they piggyback with you guys. So materials, there's not scientific about materials, but the little person, small businessmen, can participate. So Mr. Nahai is working very hard to make it small-business-friendly, the department.
Okay. Any comments? Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Patzouris, for your work in a number of different hats to the city. You've put in a lot, a lot of time for the people of Los Angeles, and I certainly appreciate that. And I appreciate working closely with you specifically on the infrastructure upgrades and trying to get to a place where we have that reliability and accountability. Your appointment comes at the same time that council offices have received the first infrastructure report, the ones that we set up together, working together. We've gotten that first report. And that's a mechanism that allows us and members of the public to better monitor the progress of the department. And I would ask that if we could use your help in better organizing this information. We sell up maps that outline the projects that are in the district, but it does not in any helpful way. Not all of these are relevant to how power is delivered. And I think we need to be able to be that liaison, because we go to the community meetings. I mean, that's what we do for a living, to be able to better translate those. Still, it's not as helpful. We need a better understanding of how power gets to our district and where the vulnerabilities are and where the department is working on that. So I just ask your help in getting us there. I look forward to working on that with you. A second mechanism for monitoring is the sheer numbers of replacements that we've had. The power reliability program, as the department put it forward, certain benchmarks for infrastructure development were an important part of that. Poles, transformers, circuits, and so on. We're now, I guess, three months into the PRP, which is scheduled to replace about 2,400 transformers a year, 5,000 poles a year by the time the ramp-up is finished. How do you feel we're doing in reaching those benchmarks?
Excellent. And Mr. Weisman was, he has become a regular to our, both to our community and customer service committee and the PRP. We got a report today, and the goals have been exceeded in power replacement, transformer replacement, circuits, and so on. It was terrific report. But coming back to how you're going to present to the public, you know, I think as an engineer, you have a massive, multi-billion-dollar infrastructure. The way we are going to approach it is, when you have a building, you have a budget, you have a time schedule, you know when you are going to be on the 15th floor, and what part of the mechanical system on that 15th floor would be. So we are going to break, in my new detail, every little infrastructure capital project. And staff has agreed to do that, and I think we are going to do that. So it's easier for you to represent to the public that a distribution station in your council district, it has a timetable, when it's going to be done, cost, contingency, and follow it through. Because again, my concern is like community college system. They went and got billions of dollars from the taxpayer, and then they wake up four, five years later and says, we don't have enough money, so we are going, we're not going to put the library at the Los Angeles Valley Junior College and the math and science in another junior college, and we're going to go back to the taxpayers and ask for money. I said that this morning, and I'm repeating. You and the ratepayers are going to be ruthless, and should be ruthless, if four years from now, my successor would come and tell you, we need more money because we had no control, because we underestimated, overestimated. Now, cost overruns can happen for many reasons, but you should know quarterly or every six months where we are heading. Not surprised in three, four years from now.
Absolutely. And I think we have the mechanism for doing that. So I appreciate the ability to check in and to look at that. We'll continue to give you feedback of how translatable that material is as well. Finally, two last things. Conservation is obviously a big part of the reliability solution. And I know we're talking about restructuring, rate restructuring in a moment. And any thoughts you have on that or what we can be doing in the conservation area more aggressively? And then the very last thing is, any idea on the timing of e-bills and when we can finally say no to paper bills?
E-bills?
Or is it up and running already?
There's already billing through the email.
I know you can pay that way, but you can't reject the paper yet.
We are working on many, and Mr. Nahai can amplify, on many. The department has been, and I used it before and I don't mind saying it, "mama pop" operation. We are $4.7 billion. Again, I had to take a second look, and I have been three years. $4.7 billion. It's MTA, Harbor, and LA and L.A. combined, 9,000 employees. But if you were to ask today, give me a trail of anything about record, they would tell you that we have to do it hand. It would take us weeks. We cannot get a report, whatever that report is. So we're going to have, for example, by the end of, by December, procurement through email, through the web, and so on. So we are working on these things.
Conservation?
And conservation, we just unveiled in February, we have conservation, the refrigerators and the CFL. But now we are offering businesses $2,500 to upgrade their energy system, and we had, I think about $30,000, in fact, I think I have it here, out of, we have $6,500 as of February, wait, out of the total 180,000. And these customers can reduce their bill by 26%. And the cost of that program is 3. cents per KWR, when you consider it costs us about nine, 10, 10 cents to produce. So, see, conservation is energy generation, cheap and cleaner than the cleanest one.
Yep.
Okay? For example, the refrigerator program, we have exchanged over 30,000 refrigerators to low income. That cost us 3.9 cents per KWR, but it costs 9 cents to generate energy. So we should seek conservation in terms of energy generation.
Okay.
Cheap and clean.
Do you feel the restructuring is the right step? Anything you would do? Any advice you would give us? I know we're not on number three, but in looking at that?
Well, I think, as with water, those who waste energy should pay high. I mean, I don't want to get transportation right now. You know, if we have stuck big tax, okay, on the oil, we wouldn't be sending it billions of dollars to the Arabs. We would be able to have a mass transit and transportation system in the United States. Okay? So here, here we have a $5 gasoline, and where does it go? To Arabs. So you use it, pay for it. It's as simple as that. If I want, I mean, it has to be strong incentives, though. It has to be strong incentives. No?
I, I just, I'm a little speechless right now. Yeah.
Just for the record, it's not just going to the Arabs, is it?
Here, yes.
For the Venezuelans, too.
Yeah.
Let's be a little more politically correct. I don't think, I don't think we should, it's just going to the Arabs.
Just a couple of questions. One, you know, renewable energy, and I know the goal, 20% by 2010, right? Is that, okay?
Yeah.
And I know that's something that you believe in as well. We're, I think we'll make that, make that goal?
We will, yeah. We are up to 13% already.
Up to 13% now? Okay. And some of the questions my colleagues asked were ones I would consider as well. But one other thing is, if you had to, I mean, you've been around the block, not to, you know, say you're, you know, been around a long time, but you've been through, I've known you since Bradley years, and you've served on a number of commissions. And so your experiences are varied. What's the biggest challenge you think facing the Department of Water and Power as president of the commission that you see in this next year and in your term that we can work on together?
The hiring. I think the department has difficulty in hiring. I think the department has difficulty in hiring, and of course, lack of personnel will entail delays in the infrastructure and water quality and, and replacement of the truck lines and so on. I think hiring, the rest, we can, we are working our way through, but hiring, it's not beyond our control, but many other factors.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, we saw on this weekend in colleagues, I know, the valley was higher, you know, hit by some of the outages more so than, than others necessarily, but the, there was the difference in last year and this year, one in which I know, again, we were particularly critical of the response. I think this time really demonstrated there's some change, and I think we appreciate that back from a constituent, not only constituent response, but a ability to quickly get some of those homes back on or businesses, you know, back on as quickly as possible. And I know we expect another heat wave coming up soon, and look forward to kind of a report that says, "Here's, here's kind of lessons learned." I know it's a little bit more costly, as we talked about, with having some of the staff on call, but hopefully with the hiring of more people too, that will make a difference. And of course, the replacement of some of the aging infrastructure that we know exists in our water and power system. So, thank you very much for your, for your willingness to serve these many, many years.
All right. Mr. Alarcon, any comments? Question?
One of the issues that I raised on the discussion about the water rates and the power rates was the implementation of the low-income rate program for DWP, and I was obviously very upset that, that our penetration rate is extremely low. And then in council, when, when asked the question, the DWP came back with a report based on the federal poverty guidelines, and they mixed the numbers up to make it seem as if the penetration rate was much higher, when in fact, if you have four children, the qualifying gross income is twice as much as the federal poverty guidelines. So that if you, if you put these numbers into it, the penetration rate was at least half of what the department said it was. And if there's one thing that really bothers me, it's that wealthy individuals are wasting thousands and thousands of gallons of water and, and using energy at extreme rates on the backs of poor people. And yet, we are not penetrating to give them the information that they fully qualify for lower rates. And I just think it's wrong, and anybody with any kind of conscience whatsoever should work harder to make sure that low-income people are not subsidizing the super wealthy so that they can waste energy and water. And so, we incorporated the creation of the Low Income Oversight Board and into the process, and I just wanted to know how we're doing.
But I appointed a Low Income Lifeline Committee Commissioner.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the Low Income Oversight Board. That was part of the process. The motion that passed the water rates out of the council included the establishment of a Low Income Oversight Board.
I'm not aware of the status of that.
What, what, what do you mean, you're not aware of it? It was part of the motion.
And that board consists of whom?
An appointment of each of the council members?
Appointment?
Of each of the council members, and it was supposed to convene every quarter?
Mr. Alarcon. Rafi, I brought it with the CLA's office.
Maybe Mr. Nahai can help out.
Yeah, council member...
I can see it's not a top priority of the President of the Commission, and I'm very disappointed, Nick.
I don't think, I don't think, that may not be a correct characterization.
It's my characterization. Please don't change my words.
What the Commission President is thinking about is an internal Low Income Committee.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm not asking that question. I'm asking about the one that the council required as part of the motion to pass the water rates, the Low Income Oversight Board.
Council member, I recall it very well. It's, it's one of the, it's the motion that you put forward, which the council...
Passed.
Approved, yes.
Right. So, what's happened with it?
But this is, this is, this is a committee, that's a committee to be appointed by the council, and...
It was supposed to be managed by the department.
But, but what would you, okay, let's talk about this. With respect to the, to the city council's oversight committee, there have been proposals that have been put forward by the department. With respect to the citizens' oversight committee, which is another oversight committee, again, I understand there are staff has engaged with, with the city council staff on that. The, the Low Income Committee, as well, I believe, there's been engagement in order to try to get that approved, but, but I don't think it's, it's fair to...
Have you appointed, has the council appointed the members?
We're waiting for you to tell us what to do.
Appoint the members.
Oh, I have an idea. Why don't we just do it then? If they're not...
If you don't want to do it, we'll be happy to do it.
We can go ahead and go ahead and just do it and activate it.
Let, let the CLA answer this, please.
Actually, Madam Chair, the department has submitted a transmittal to our office and the CAO's office with respect to their perspective on how to develop this committee and so forth. We're in the process of reviewing that report and coming up with our report, the CAO and our office, on the whole rollout for this.
Do you think you can get that done in thirty days so we can have it in our next meeting? Set it up?
I'm, I'm very pleased to hear that, but when the general manager and the President of the Commission don't even know about it, that causes me great concern.
That, that is very unfair. I sat up here and I told you that I do know about it. I spoke with you about it. I referred to the motion that was...
You knew about the report he just mentioned?
Excuse me. I said that we had engaged with, with the city council in connection with the appointment of the committee, which is exactly what the CLA just, just endorsed, council member.
Not exactly what they said, no.
Okay.
They said there was a report. So, can you share with us what is going to happen with the Low Income Oversight Board from your perspective?
As I've said many times, we, we very much embrace the concept of a Low Income Oversight Committee. We've pledged our cooperation with it. It is really up to the city council how that committee is going to be composed, what its scope of authority will be, and, and we have, we have made a proposal to the CLA's office in connection with that.
Okay. But, but let me...
If, if there is more...
The Commission formed the Rate Payers Bill of Rights. One of the rights is Low Income and Life Program. That document will be delivered to each and every rate payer, so they will know where to access it, what it does, and I will send you a copy.
You know, the, the fact of the matter is, most utilities in the state of California have a higher rate of penetration for their low-income program than DWP. That's a fact.
We accept that.
And I know because, I know because I created the law.
Yeah. We accept the fact, and there has not been an outbreak.
But, 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 Mr., I didn't interrupt you. Please don't interrupt me. The fact is that there are methods to, to ensure that people will, will use their opportunity to get a lower rate. I don't know whether it was a mailer, whether it was going door-to-door, but all I'm saying is, DWP does not have a decent rate of penetration relative to poor people and low-income people, and even those people who are far beyond the federal poverty guidelines, in terms of getting them signed up for the low-income rate. And you're telling us that it's our responsibility to create the oversight committee to make sure that you do that.
Well, I suggest we take them up on it.
Well, I, I, I support that, because obviously...
Yeah.
There's a disconnect here, and I'm just sick and tired of, of the poor subsidizing the wealthy.
I think that we should take them up on it, get the CLA report, and then we should act on that, and if it's necessary, then we should go ahead and, and figure out the process for putting people on the committee, and then let's just move it forward.
Now, Mr. Patzouris, we've known each other a long time. As passionate as you are about the build-out on the infrastructure, I'm that passionate about penetrating on the low-income rate. I would have liked to have seen that passion emerge, and I've seen that passion emerge many times on a lot of different issues, but in this economy, people cannot afford to pay rates unfairly when they are, are legally entitled to a lower rate. DWP has to do a better job of giving them what they are entitled to, and I don't think they are. So, I hope, I wish, I would have wished that it was one of your priorities, to correct the, the system, because we're making senior citizens, we're making people with modest incomes, we're making young families pay higher utility rates instead of buying better food for their children or better clothing for their children. And for some people, food and clothing is, is an afterthought, but in my district, it is a fundamental challenge. And I wish you people would get it in your heads that this is something this city needs to do. It's not just a policy to be blown off.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. And CLA, if you would schedule that item thirty days from today's date, or thirty days so that we can have the report back, and then we could proceed and move ahead in setting this up.
Certainly.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Patzouris? All right. Does anyone want to make a move?
Approval of the nominee.
Without objection, all right. That'll be the order. Thank you. Oh, before we go on again, Mr. Zuma Dogg on item number two.
Yes. Thank you. It's nice to be here with you two. First, let me clarify what Senator Alarcon was trying to say, was that he wants you to figure out a way to have the middle-class taxpayers pay for the low-income people, how to jack it up even more for them. He's just got this socialist agenda that only represents a small faction of the city of Los Angeles.
He's addressed the committee.
That's my opinion. It's public comment. I'm warning...
Express your opinion to the committee member, not to Mr. Patzouris.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Just like in council.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
Same rules.
City Council, I'm very concerned that Mr. Alarcon represents a very niche faction. It is a priority, but not a top priority, not a top priority. Now, I see, I don't think I got the appropriate time, because I've only got a minute here. First of all, yeah, what happened to my time?
Clock rolling.
But don't you get two minutes?
Get two minutes.
Keep talking.
Look at what's happening here. Let's just say that the whole thing, you know, you got, you got a tough job because you got a corrupt organization for fifty years. You guys are new here, I understand, but, oh, thank you. See, thank you. They did make a mistake. Now I feel more relaxed. First of all, three to four years just to train workers for the infrastructure, I heard today, so city council, please be aware that we do need as much, the infrastructure improvements, but it's still years away, because we haven't even trained the people. Again, not these people's fault, they're just stepping in. We have twice the amount of council members here. I'd like to also warn you that the Sierra snowcaps will not be providing the water we expect, and with all the density that's going on, there's going to be a huge water crisis. And let's see here, as far as Dr. Deming. Okay, we got a lot of waste with DWP, and there's somebody who I'm a big fan of called Dr. W. Edwards Deming, and I hope I'm not allowed to address the appointees. I hope that they're familiar with Dr. Deming. Can I, are you familiar with Dr. Deming? Can I at least...
No, I had to caution you.
Okay, I'm sorry. What Dr. Deming does is, for example, he helps you improve the system. I know we've got a lot of good workers at DWP. We need to simplify the process for them. Is that time?
Yeah, that's...
It's been very, it's very disjointed. I apologize, but Dr. Deming, you could follow up. I'm sure you know who he is. I got it on my zoomatimes.com. Deming's fourteen points.
All right. Thank you very much. So, without objection, we're going to recommend approval on item number two, and then go on to item number three. Thank you very much.
Ms. Perry, I do want to say before you all leave, I think there may have been a misimpression put forward by my colleague that you all don't care about people in the community, and I know you do, and so I do want to say that, and it worked very hard, in fact, to, to deal with that, and although there may be some technical challenges in getting the committee and, and working that out, I, I do believe you, you feel that way. So, I just want to make that...
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Item number three. Thank you.
Madam Chair, item number three.
Want to say something else? We already voted on it.
No, he'd like to, he'd like to stay as the Commission President on item number three.
Okay. Great.
Item number three relates to DWP and CAO report relative to amending the electric rate ordinance to restructuring departments' electric rates. We'd also like to suggest that you take...
I said item number three.
Item number four with three, since four is a motion that relates to them coming back with regard to revised rate restructuring ordinance.
All right. We're on item number three now, so...
We were just doing the reappointment of the Commissioner. Now we're on the rates.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. Who wants to make a presentation on item number three?
Let me, let me start, and then I'll ask Mr. Hotchkiss to, to say a couple of things. Madam Chair, members of the committee, thank you very much for this opportunity to, to appear before you with respect to item number three. Let me, if I may, just, just say a couple of other things regarding the, the low-income issue. I'm, I'm sorry that Councilmember Alarcon isn't here to, to hear this, however, oh, he is here. However, we have submitted an outreach plan to the council member's office. We'd like very much to get feedback on it. We're finalizing a contract with respect to our penetration in order to try to improve that. We've sent out two thousand flyers to Meals and Wheels participants in order to expand outreach. I've made a personal appeal to all DWP personnel in order to help us with our outreach. We have bus ads that are going to be flowing on July seventh for a period of, of twelve weeks, and they will be bilingual, and so we want to pledge our cooperation with respect to the formation of the committee, with respect to penetration, low-income and lifeline communities. We care a great deal about those who are not as able to fend for themselves as the, as the rest of us are. With that, I'll move to the electric rate restructuring. In December, the council referred the, the restructuring proposal back to the DWP commissioners with a direction. The DWP developed, and I'm quoting, "A power rate restructuring formula that charges taxpayers throughout the city on an equitable basis, regardless of the region of the city that they reside in or conduct business." At the end of April, we resubmitted the restructuring proposal and, and are very pleased to have an opportunity to present it in person to you today. However, before we do that, the city attorney does have a comment to make, because there have been changes that have been made, especially with respect to the, to the dates, which will necessitate the resubmission of this package to the Board of, Board of Water and Power Commissioners. However, I think we can proceed concurrently along the two, along the two processes, but I'll ask him to elaborate on that.
The city attorney?
Good afternoon. David Hotchkiss, Assistant City Attorney. When this matter was last before the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, I believe that they voted on it on April the twenty-fifth of this year, and in the version that was before the board at that time, there were certain rate effective dates that were written into the draft ordinance approved by my office. Now, unfortunately, for a whole variety of reasons, I'm sure, we're now at the end of June, and we have operative dates set forth in the ordinance that begin with July first, two thousand and eight, and there's a fundamental rule in ratemaking that you cannot have retroactive rates, and they always have to be prospective in application. So, on Thursday of last week, this was brought to our attention, and with the department, we've been working to revise the, the various operative dates for the different schedules within it. These are primarily just technical changes, but my office is of the opinion that because the dates must be moved into the, into the, into the future, and because obviously, when the date becomes effective, that will change the financial structure within the department, the Board of Water and Power Commissioners should be given an opportunity to review these new dates and the clarification language that goes with them. So, the proposal of my office is, is that this board is, and this, I'm sorry, this committee can move forward, the council can move forward contemporaneously on a parallel track. We plan to have this matter back, back before the Board of Water and Power Commissioners to make these technical corrections, to move the dates forward into the future so that it would be legally compliant, and then we can bring back to the council the, the amended ordinance. So, that's where we are right now in a time crunch.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. Greg Black to make the presentation, which will principally cover the changes that have been made since the, since the board packet was first submitted to you, and then if there are additional questions, we'd be very pleased to take them.
All right. So, there will be some changes and kind of a summary of what we're planning to do with the...
Hold the mic a little closer and identify your name and your position.
Okay. My name is Gregory Black, and I'm the Manager of Rates and Contracts at the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, and I will discuss with you the, the electric rate restructuring proposal. Since we last... Since we last came to council and the rate restructuring was referred back.
Thank you.
We've made, we've made three changes to the rate restructuring package. The first change is, is that instead of using the CPUC temperature zones that we originally proposed, we're using a scientific study that was done by the University of Southern California. That study was actually done for our water rate ordinance back in 1994. The second.
That's different than the UCLA study you provided us with?
No, this is a UCLA study, it was done in.
USC, so.
Oh, that's a cross-town rivalry.
Just wanted to make sure.
Oh, my God.
I just wondered if it was different.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought I said UCLA, I'm sorry.
You must be.
Okay, so the second change is, is that because the rates are revenue-neutral, we had to modify the tiers to, to the tiered rates to ensure that there were no subsidies between the two temperature zones, because by changing the actual zones, it actually changed the allocation of the actual rates. The third element that we added was that we've added mandatory time of use for residential customers with monthly energy use of 3,000 kilowatt-hours and above. This is six times what a normal residential customer would use. To the next slide. So the rate restructuring objectives that we have is that we want to provide accurate price signals to our customers so that they can use energy efficiently. We want to reinforce our, we like to reinforce our strategy on renewable resources, and we also want to make sure that the rates, the rates that we design are revenue-neutral. And this is important, because this goes back to the whole issue with the city attorney as far as the, we want, basically for the fiscal year of July 2008 to June of 2009, with the rate restructuring, we will collect the same amount of revenue as we would with the rate, with the same rate structure, so it's a zero-sum game. So just to give you a summary of the proposed changes, with the residential rates, we've added the tiered rates for the temperature zones, we've taken out the service charges out of the tiered rates. We've done this so that our rates would be more usage-based, and it basically provides a lower rate to customers with lower energy usage. We've changed the billing season, we've added billing seasons to the residential rates, so before residential customers played a, paid a flat rate all year long, now they'll have a summer rate and they'll have a winter rate. And then the mandatory time of use for customers with 3,000 kilowatt-hours. Now for commercial customers, the pricing has changed more towards our marginal cost, which gives customers a better price signal. We realigned the rate schedules to be based on voltage level as opposed to demand. This is more of a signal as to customers will pay more based on the use of the system, of the use of our system. We revised the billing seasons for commercial customers. We're planning on making mandatory time of use all the way down to 30 KW by the year 2011. So it would go from seventy-five, right now, it's mandatory time of use for commercial customers at 100 kilowatts and above, that's going to work its way down from 100 to 75 down to 30. So all of our A2 and A3 customers will have mandatory time of use. We're also, for residential customers with onsite transformation, these are customers who live in houses that are like 20,000 square feet, they will have, they will be, basically be treated as commercial customers. This should give them a better signal as far as how to use their energy as well. The other key elements of what we're trying to do is with our net metering rate ordinance, is we've made changes to our net metering rate ordinance where it's more consistent with what the investor-owned utilities are doing, it's more in line with what the environmental community is asking us to do, and it basically supports our renewable programs. So this is a real key element for us. We revised our customer generation rate. This was a rate ordinance that we recently revised, but we had a lot of pushback from our customer base, so we tried to work with them to come up with a better rate ordinance, customer generation rate for our customers that have onsite generation. And then we have a new amp rate that we want to put in place to work with the alternative maritime program at the Port of LA for the electrification of the ships. Okay, now just to give you an overview of the new temperature zone map that we have with the UCLA study, this map is based on the average temperature degrees of eighty degrees, average temperature of eighty degrees or better, so that's the.
Can you just highlight something for me, because I, tell me why, or tell us why this map is more accurate and reliable than one previously used by the CPUC, or the Public Utilities Commission? And tell me what the difference, or tell the committee what the differences are between the two maps in terms of zone boundaries as you go through it, if you wouldn't mind.
Well, I'll go right to this next chart right here.
Okay.
On the right, you have the CPUC map, which is the original map that we proposed, and that map basically goes along the Mulholland Drive, and I think that's the Santa Ana Freeway. The, the temperature zone map that we have on the left is more in line with the microclimates of the City of Los Angeles. We believe that the, that the CPUC map, or we believe that it is accurate, you can see that to a certain sense, in a certain sense, it's, it's accurate as far as the temperatures for our area, but it doesn't really take into account the microclimates of the, of Los Angeles. So we believe that the UCLA map that we've been using, that we have used in the past for our water rates is more representative of the actual microclimates within the city.
Ms. Grue, had a quick question on this. I also like to add that Mr. Cardenas is present.
And the only reason I did the US-CLA is only because I did read the study, and, but it was done in 1994.
Yes.
Okay. And my concern is that, as it indicates in the, in their report, that they don't anticipate any long-term, significant long-term temperature trend. And from my perspective, not, and I'm not, you know, clearly a scientist on this, but since 1994, we have in fact seen a significant temperature trend of it going up, clearly based on what we've seen even anecdotally in the last couple of years. And specifically when you, and the reason it came to light for me and wanting to read this was because of the report, and it's, it's less about the payment of Studio City and Toluca Lake, because they're usually a little higher income, so it's, it's less about the financial impact of that, but it, and it's only for those three months. The question is, though, if you live in those areas, it seems just common sense and different that it wouldn't, that you would have that kind of change in a, in a zip code area, so, and then reviewing it that this study is in 1994, and that, I do believe our temperature trends have changed since 1994.
Well, to respond to that concern is, I would say over the last couple of summers, it has been very hot, I think we have seen higher temperatures, but if you go to this chart, I have a chart here on page twenty-four, actually, you guys don't have that in your chart, these are backup slides that I have.
Okay.
But we discussed this with the, the author of this study, who is, is no longer at UCLA, and he had indicated that there were no observable trend, changes in the temperature in the, in the, basically in the Los Angeles area. So what he did was, is he gave us the temperature between 1971 to 1993 for the Los Angeles, UCLA site, and the, basically in the Canoga Park site. And if you look here on the chart here, and I guess it's kind of hard to see, I'm sorry about that.
Sorry.
You can see that in the months of June, July, and August, between 1971 and 1993, in the Los Angeles, UCLA site, the temp, the average temperature in June is 79.5 degrees, whereas from 1994 to 2006, the average temperature was, actually, that should be 2004, I'm sorry, the average temperature is 78.2 degrees. So it actually went down some, on average. Same for July, it's gone down, but for August, it's actually gone up. And if you look at Canoga Park, it's gone down, the average monthly temperature in June has gone down, but in, in July, it's gone down some, and in August, it's actually gone up. Now, that's.
Mr. Cardenas has a question.
Hold on, this is, this is being, people are listening to this, not visually, but audibly, but the thing is, when you say it's gone down, I think you should point out that in, in June, it's gone down less than one degree.
Yes.
Overall, during that vast period. In July, it's gone down about seven tenths of a degree. So when you say gone down, I don't want people to get the impression that it's gone down ten degrees. Obviously, it's gone down slightly.
Yes.
But, but not dramatically.
Okay. And, and that was one of the keys, like.
One degree, so I don't think that's.
You're, you're correct.
Alarcon, if you want to. Yeah, the more important concern would be, what's the impact of a.
I just, just to follow, because looking at the.
I think that might have a dramatic impact. I don't know.
Well, the, the actual, the actual study that we're using, and the baseline that we're using is eighty degrees. So basically, what you're looking at is, is that the blue line from our, let me go back to our chart here, to our map, we're basically going off the eighty-degree line. So if you're talking a degree, you're, you're basically saying that that eighty-degree line may be eighty-one degrees, or maybe seventy-nine degrees, but the whole idea and the whole evaluation process of this, of the rate restructuring and the tiered rates and the zones, is based on a fifty, fifteen-degree comparison between the two zones. So, you know, I'm not sure how measurable the difference that is, you know, it's, it's probably minor, but kind of to go back to, to your point, that's only two sites where we're measuring the temperatures, and to a certain extent, they could probably, we could probably look at more sites to get a more accurate representation of what's going on with the weather. One of the things that we do intend to do is to follow up on the study to, to do a further evaluation of it, to basically to validate it and to, and to refine it going forward.
Because all we have, and, is the study that was done in 1994, and that there was no, at least in the backup that we had been provided with. And it does mention on, on page three of this report, that it says, "The high degree of modulation of maximum daily temperature by the topography makes usage of an objective analysis technique to construct isotherms from the average temperatures inaccurate." And then it says that he, the analysis was, was manually constructed by using his knowledge of meteorology, climatology, and geography of the greater Los Angeles area. And I ask these questions because I know that every, we've gotten calls, I think DWP's gotten calls, when the original report came out, that suggested, again, just that, that line, that if you're at Coldwater, in a sense, at Coldwater and Ventura on the west side of the street, you are in Sherman Oaks, and therefore, you are part of a different tier than if you are at Coldwater and Ventura on the east side of the street, on the difference. And you can kind of understand if it's Mulholland, or you can, you know, different parts, but that was clearly made people question the validity of that relative to the updated information and the, and the data.
Well, one of the, one of the, the issues that we had to work with on these charts was, once you got on the blue line, once you got on the eighty-degree line, is where do you actually draw the line as to who's in zone one and who's in zone two? And for us, from a, a system standpoint, as far as administering the actual rate, the best way for us to do that was by zip code. So basically, we took that line and just, if more than 51% of your zip code was above the line, you were in, above or to the right of the line, you were in zone two, and if you were below, or to the left, you were in zone one. So we had to make a decision, so that was just a decision we made, and in some instances, you're going to probably see areas where somebody on one side of the street is, is in zone two, and somebody on the other is in zone one. That's just a decision that we had to make as far as, as how we were going to allocate it.
And so are you saying there's been an updated study, though, from this 1994, which you made your determination on?
No, actually, what we did was, is we contacted the professor that performed the study, for him to validate whether the study was still valid for us to use, and he did that. Now, he did, he did indicate that there were probably, that in the homogeneous areas, like in, say, Canoga, Canoga Park, where they have the different weather sites, that the temperature study is really, is pretty much valid there. He says that in areas where the, like in Studio City, and Hollywood, wouldn't say Hollywood and, was it Santa Monica? Santa Monica Mountains and Hollywood, that there could be some more weather sites that are in those areas now where we could get a better representation of what those temperatures are, because there weren't weather sites in those areas at the time that he did the study, that he performed the study.
But they didn't study, for example, they didn't study in the Northeast Valley, Pacoima or Silmar necessarily, correct? I mean, it's in the zone, but they, they only studied in the Valley, Canoga Park?
Can I tell you where, exactly where all of the weather stations were? Some of them were, were in Los Angeles, and some were outside, and then there was a, kind of a mix of other surveys that they used to determine what the temperatures would be.
Did the UCLA professor do a report kind of substantiating what he did, you know, reviewing the 1994?
Well, well, one of, one of the things that our commissioners, our commissioners asked for, commissioner, well, one of our commissioners asked us to get a validation of the study from a second from another party. So we're in the process of doing that right now.
And what was their concern in seeking that validation?
That it was done by UCLA.
Well, I agree with that, Danny.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to say that I like the concept of using microclimates, because it gives us more definitive analysis, and I certainly hope we don't go back to what we did before, which was drawing the Mason-Dixon line on Mulholland, and, you know, you know the outcome on that was.
Correct.
Are you, can you, you want to keep going, or do you want to take questions now?
Well, let me, let me just respond in a, in a slightly different way to Mr. Black's most recent response to that question. I think, I think this was a study that was done in 1994, we recognize that.
Right.
The, the author stands by the study as of today, and has told us that he considers the study to continue to be valid.
So are you going to seek validation on behalf of the commissioner who requested it?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and then from whom will you seek?
I don't know where.
Or from where?
All right, well, we're looking at USC right now.
Okay.
Actually, it's true. Well, well, first, first of all, we, we have a bid process that we have to go through, so we're going to have to actually go out and, and find reputable meteor, climatologists to actually, to, to validate the study. So it'll be, I mean, the amount of money that we may have to spend on it, we may be able to do a personal services contract, but we do need to find the most reputable source to, to validate it, because, keep in mind that not only is it going to be a representation of our power rates going forward, it's also going to be a representation of our water rates as well. So we need to make sure that we get a reputable person to, to validate the study.
Okay. Why don't we take the cards on three and let them, just one of you would just vacate one of the chairs, and then we'll have the people come up on item three. Rhonda Mills, Zuma Dogg, and Eric Moody on item three, please.
Madam Chair, may I ask, is the chair's intent to vote on this item today?
I had hoped to, and if you want, if you have other opinions.
It's my understanding that, that this has to be tweaked?
Well, we may end up there. It sounds like we are going through a, heading towards tweaking.
No, I, I think the information before is, the department is anticipating going back to the board to have changed, and then return back to.
Is that what you're expecting to do?
Well, what, what we're hoping your committee will endorse is a dual-track process in which the City Council will follow its procedures, and at the same time, will take back the package to the commission.
Which would require ten votes.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Which would require ten votes.
At the, at the council level, I'll have to seek my.
Let's talk, let's talk on the side, let me get these cards. Rhonda, Mr. Zuma Dogg, and Eric Moody.
Am I on?
Yeah, you're on.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
You know, it's your strength and intellect that you're known for, but it's your style that I love the most. I just had to say that.
Thank you. You like the hat, okay?
I love the hat.
It's good, it's good, it's good, it's all good.
I'm Rhonda Mills with the Center for Energy Efficiency and Renewable Technologies. I also came today representing a group of other environmental and public health groups that you all know well, Coalition for Clean Air, the Sierra Club, Green LA, the American Lung Association in California, and others. We have submitted documents and testimony in support of this proposal ongoing for the last couple of years, and, or last year, actually, and I didn't bring anything for you today, because you've seen it all from us before. But what we want to say to you today is, we know this is a difficult decision, and Mr. Alarcon and Ms. Perry, I believe, are in, in those kinds of districts where it becomes really a very difficult decision to change rates. But it's warranted, and, and, you know, I want you guys to know that I feel like you improved this policy, you know, with all of your questions and your good thinking on it. It's, it's really nice to see you all understand the rates and the structure here. This is. This is complicated stuff. But I want you to feel good about the policy because you've, we've got more tiers that are better tiers and you've got those improved microclimate maps, okay? So it's a good start, but it's just a start, okay? This is a good proposal that we need to acknowledge and accept, but you need to go back in future years and you can improve it even more with better mapping, with better tiers, with improved services for the disadvantaged, okay? But just, you know, let's start at the place today that we're the last Western utility in the United States not to have tiered rates, okay? So in a carbon-constrained world, that's a little bit of a trouble.
Okay, thank you.
So can I just...
Wrap it up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing to President Garcetti. He, he was asking questions about conserva, you know, when you...
Going to wrap it up?
Yes. When you spend this money on grid upgrades, that reliability buys you saved energy, okay? Because you're not losing it on the grid.
Okay, Mr. Zuma Dogg.
Yes, thank you. First of all, as I'm looking at this map, one thing Councilmember Alakon should be a little bit concerned about, I hear what he said, here's what he's saying. You look at this, 90 degrees up here in some areas, the difference between up here, you know, that's a lot of his district, 90 degrees, the cost to heat, to, to cool your homes when it's that much hotter, it costs a lot. So unfortunately, it's probably low-income areas because it stinks to be in such heat and that's why it's the lower housing because it's way too hot. So yeah, there is a problem there. They're stuck, you know, the poorest of people in the hottest of zones. But I still say I ain't paying for it, y'all. Okay, now, as far as this number three, and I noticed that there wasn't the proper time put on the clock, it's a minute, it's down to 38 seconds. The, the, the report, this is, oh, this is the report from Karas Hassan. Here's some things I'm concerned about with this report, item number three. Basically, they need to recover costs. What's happening is the cost that DWP pays for a lot of things, water from the municipal system or whatever, they have a lot of costs and they, they need to pass them on to the ratepayer. So that's going to be a lot of increased cost there. I'm not, you know, I'm not, that's how business works, man. If you used to pay $10 for something, you were charging 24. Well, now if you're paying 20, you got to pass on the rate hike. So that will be coming. A lot of tiered rates, a lot of changing rates. I understand on the bills, like the last three bills, they've all had different, it's getting very complicated. And the problem is with no consistency, the consumer does not know what to expect on their bill. And so, you know, it's causing a lot of problems. And I think you're going to have trouble collecting, I don't know, I guess you'd be...
You can direct your comments to the committee.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's very confusing if I were able to, as council, what you should be asking for, you know, very confusing, confusion is costly. Dr. Deming would say draw a flow chart and go through, find, cut out the bureaucracy. We need to improve efficiency, maybe a simplified bill, I don't know. I know anytime I hear about tiers and confusion and different things, three different bills, three different things, that's when Dr. Deming needs to step in and I'll waive my time for the rest of it. Thank you so much.
Very much. Eric Moody from Janice Hahn's office?
Good afternoon. Eric Moody with the office, Councilwoman Janice Hahn. The councilwoman and her chief legislative deputy are in LAX today at a meeting. She could not be here. So she asked me to distribute the letter that I distributed to the clerk who gave to you and read some highlights of it into the record for you. So in short, while the councilwoman appreciates all the work completed thus far by the DWP, various city staffs, CAO, CLA, et cetera, she remains concerned that the restructuring will put our industrial users at a competitive disadvantage in areas of our district. Therefore, the councilwoman requests that the report to council include an analysis of, a clarification of the Huron study and compare that to what other utilities do. Address questions of why does DWP not have a rate class for large load industrial users? And what do other utilities do? What does the city charter allow and require DWP to consider when drafting contracts for large load users? And compare and confirm that Southern California Edison's and the City of Vernon's utility rates are lower than ours and make sure that we address these issues in the report request to council.
Okay, thank you very much. And just so that you know, I hadn't intended to include Janice's, or Ms. Hahn's comments as part of the record. And depending on which way we go today, ask the CAO to do more in-depth analysis on the industrial impacts from restructuring before the item goes to council. Or we may, we may, or we may ask them to come back to committee. We're trying to figure that out right now.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will include her concerns.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nahai, do you want to speak?
Yeah, just, just a couple of comments, Madam Chair. Regarding some comments that were, were made by Ms. Mills, we are embarking on a dynamic process. This is why the, the proposal that's before you contemplates restructuring only for a four-month period during the summer months. And this is why, as you'll see, the increases between the first tier and the, and the second tier are, are really not large. So we understand that we have to move cautiously that these are first steps for the city of Los Angeles. We've come under some criticism for not proceeding more aggressively. But, but we believe we need to, since this is the first time that this is being done in Los Angeles, that it behooves us to move slowly. And, and we'll continue to refine the model, to reconsider the temperature zones, to, to take an additional look as to what we can do to expand the concept if necessary. And so, you know, we believe that this is an iterative process and we're right at the beginning of it. So I wanted to stress that issue first.
Mr. Garcetti, I think you had a couple of...
Just a couple of things. So if we could go to pages nine and 10 in the presentation. So I, I understand the zone one and zone two, essentially you accommodate in zone two a higher level of the beginning of tier two, that's the recognition of the different temperature. But then on top of that, the increase from two to three is a much smaller increase in zone two. Why is that? Because I think, and let me just, before, sorry to interrupt, but let me just say, I think personally speaking, I agree with some parts of the city where you have, on energy, not on water, because we're not discussing that today, but on energy use, there are some places that are hotter and you have to recognize people can't move. There's, there is, for the first two tiers, recognition that there might be a slightly different level. But tier three is the super user that we're talking about. And the super user somehow in zone two gets a break. So there's only .03 of a cent, I think that's correct, that it goes up from tier one to there. Whereas in zone one, if you're a super user, it goes up a full .08. You go from 1161 to 1241. But from zone, in zone two, you go from 1161 to 1191. So it's a double kind of easing. What was the logic behind that?
Well, the logic was based on when we calculated what the reasonable energy use was for tier one customers, basically in a, in a, in zone one versus zone two, tier, zone one got basically got 350 hours for reasonable energy use. So basically, if you go back to page, back to...
No, I, I get that on the tiers.
Yes.
I agree with that. So let's take that off the table, okay? I agree that tiers should have different hours on that and, and that recognizes the difference in, in weather. But on top of the difference in the usage, you also have a different bump from zone one to zone two. Is that clear? See, you see on this one, it says, if you're in tier one in zone one, it's .1161...
Yes.
...cents per kilowatt hour.
Correct.
When you get to tier two, it's .1180 and then it goes to .1241.
Yes.
So it goes up to disincentivize presumably, or what we were talking about, what Mr. Putzouris was talking about in his nomination, at a certain level, we need to start taxing the super user and disincentivize the use. In zone two, if you happen to be a super user, you kind of win the lottery a little bit because it doesn't go up as much.
What, what you have to keep in mind is when you're taking a look at these, at the different tiers, you're looking at a blended rate between the three zones. So right above where you, okay...
Three zones or three tiers?
The three tiers, the three tiers. So if you look at the average consumption, the average consumption in tier one is 216 kilowatt hours per month. When you go to tier two, it's 569. Then zone one, it's 569 kilowatt hours per month. That 569 hours is 350 kilowatt hours times the tier one rate. And then it's the remaining 219 times the tier two rate. So now when you go to the tier three in zone one, you have an average consumption of 1662 kilowatt hours a month. So they're paying the higher rate...
Okay, so that's just an average of that. So if you did have tier three at 1662, it would reflect the same price?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. I, I didn't realize that was a case study of an average tier three user as opposed to what you start getting charged at tier three. Okay, that answers that question. Second question I had was really for our general manager and president. Are these, are the tier three rates enough in your mind to get us the conservation disincent, or incentives and the use disincentives that we want to be at? Or is this, or is your sense that it's...
As I've, as I've said, we've been, we've been criticized by various quarters that this, that what we're putting before you today is not aggressive enough. And we recognize that. But, but we believe we have to take this to the public. We have to have a, a public buy-in. This is the first time we're doing this. So we would rather curtail our ambitions a bit and, and take these first steps. We believe that as, as this concept takes hold, that we'll be able to make changes which will additionally incentivize conservation. But, but our hope is that by getting this message out to, to the people of Los Angeles, just by getting the message out that we're going to go to tiered rates, that that in and of itself will, will encourage additional conservation.
So the message more than the amount?
I, I think, I think, you know, we're not, you know, our view is that we don't want to make any additional revenue from this. What we want to do is to change behavior.
Right.
So, so the, so the question is just how aggressively do you go out to the public? We could have, we could have come to you with, with a proposal that, that had tiered rates year-round, that had blocks which were much higher, which, which was altogether more ambitious. We've, we've opted to, to scale things down because these, these are our first steps. And, you know, I think somebody once said, you know, the pursuit of perfection is what keeps things from getting done. So we're, you know, we're the only utility that doesn't have tiered rates.
I agree. You have me at hello on that, but I just want to make sure it's more than a message. It's actually, I want us to be ambitious. So that's just me speaking and I don't speak for the chair or any of the other members. But I think that if, if, if we don't see any reduction at that top tier, I think we need to revisit that immediately and see what we're doing on the reduction side. You know, it's, this is one part of conservation, not to beat a dead horse or to light a dead bulb, but, you know, CFLs, two in every household, every single time we talk about this, they're still not at the doorsteps of every Angelino. That was supposed to be done a year ago and it was going to be done three months ago, two years ago. It's still not done. I check in literally with my staff every week when we have our district office meeting. Anybody get light bulbs this week? Nobody. So we, we have to also be looking at it more aggressively across the board as well.
That's a hands-on, hands-on, very direct way. Mr. Nahai, if you can just tell us very quickly, what's your strategy for getting the, the communication out to the ratepayers above and beyond relying on extensive neighborhood council meetings because not everybody's in a neighborhood council? So what is your strategy to go beyond, above and beyond that?
Well, obviously, we're going to utilize bill inserts in order to, to, to appraise our, apprise our customers of the new tiered rates that are going into, into effect. And I'll, I'll sit down with our public affairs department and see additional steps that we can take in order to spread the message.
All right. And then just a quick, quick reference to the CAO position, which seems generally supportive of rate restructuring, but they've stated that additional information may be needed to confirm that temperature, confirm temperature zones and tiered pricing that signals, signals that would actually definitively lead to greater energy conservation. And as a result, I believe that the CAO's proposed, the DWP report in two years, while I think that may be too long, on the status of energy conservation efforts and revenue impacts associated with this proposal. I wanted to get your reaction to the CAO's concerns and recommendations as they relate to your current proposal.
We would agree with the recommendation wholeheartedly and I would also agree that two years is too long.
Yeah, two years is too long.
However, we also have to remember that at this point in time, that this, the restructuring won't go into effect until next summer. So, so it would only be, be happening in the summer months of '09. And so we would have to wait a period beyond that in order to determine what the, what the impacts have been.
One, one other quick question, and I'll go to Mr. Cardenas. We didn't specifically talk about commercial customers by this new approach. And it appears that high, I'm assuming that high consumption commercial users will be placed in your time of use program. Would you just tell us for the record and for the public to be able to hear, how will this impact commercial customers, especially the high consumption commercial users?
Well, I'll ask Mr. Black to, to elaborate on that. But with respect to the letter that was submitted to the, to the committee, we understand that there is one commercial customer and our staff is engaging in, in very comprehensive discussions with that customer in order to try to, to satisfy their, their needs as to a rate structure. The Huron report made a very strong recommendation that the department not enter into specialized contracts with particular customers. And so, and so we don't, we don't want to do that. And we, we don't want to have any impression out there that, that there is a, a system of, of favoritism. At the same time, we're very well aware that we want to, to attract and keep our businesses here in the city. So with respect to that one customer, there are very detailed discussions that are going on. But with respect to the broader impacts, I'll ask Mr. Black to respond to that question.
When you refer to commercial, are you, are you talking about industrial?
Well, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Black to respond to it.
Okay, well...
When you just, when you say commercial, does it include industrial?
Yes. Yeah, and yes, there's, there's no distinction for us between commercial and industrial customers. They're on the same rate.
Okay, thank you.
So just to kind of give you an idea of, when you look at the commercial rates, basically, our rates in the past have been traditionally demand-based rates. So the majority of the, the revenue that we collected from our rates was based on customers' demand as opposed to energy. So it was more of a capacity-related charge. We've shifted the rates, the restructured rates for commercial customers move more to, more away from demand and move more towards energy charges. So to a certain extent, some customers who have a significant amount of energy use are going to pay a little bit more than what they were paying before. Now, when you, when you look at that, it, as a, basically, as the, as a group in total, those customers traditionally have been paying maybe a little bit less than what they should have paid. So the increase that we see is pretty modest and we think it's modest and we think it's, it's actual, that it, that it should occur. Now, just to kind of give you an example, I don't know if you can see the chart up there. I don't know if I can make it any larger. This would be our commercial rate. Let me see if I can...
While he's getting that, we will charge on peak, commercial customers, higher rates. And vice versa, off-peak will be reduced.
Mr. Cardenas has a question while you're trying to...
While you're doing that, all that. Mr. Nahai, just a generic question. On, on Councilmember Hahn's document that she submitted to the committee as part of the record, the last bullet point says, "Compare and confirm that Southern California Edison's industrial rate is 14.6% lower than DWP's industrial rate." That's not a like-for-like statement, right? I mean, that's because our big customers, they can choose certain rates based on certain reliability responsibilities that are afforded to them, right? So maybe on certain categories, SCE customers surrounding the city of Los Angeles might be a little cheaper, but not your straight-up customer who wants the full services at the best reliability, correct?
That's correct. I'm not sure exactly how that figure was, was arrived at.
But aside from, from that figure, it's my understanding, if you do a like-for-like, if Southern California Edison is affording a big customer the full, the full service rate, and so is DWP, we're still cheaper in that category than our neighbors are.
We believe we are and we, we believe one of the major attractions of coming to Los Angeles to do business are our power rates. And with, as I say, with respect to that particular customer, we want very much to work with them to make sure that, that the, that the amounts that they're paying for energy overall are, are lower than what would be charged them outside of DWP territory.
Thank you. Did you want to clarify it? No?
No, didn't, no.
I agree.
I don't know if you want to go through the exercise, you have to be in a logical gene, a technical, demand versus energy, maybe the...
A little closer to the microphone, a little closer to the microphone.
Just identify yourself for the record.
Maybe, maybe Mr. Black can explain...
Maybe, Mr. Black can explain the difference between demand and energy.
Mr. Putzouris, can you just identify yourself from the record so that we have no speakers?
Yeah, I'm Nick Pachora, as President of the Commission. You may want to explain the demand versus energy.
Okay, well, basically, when you look at a particular customer, the amount of demand that they use is basically, when you talk about capacity, say for instance, a customer has 100, say 10 hundred-watt light bulbs. If they have 10 hundred-watt light bulbs and they turn them all on at the same time, the amount of capacity that they're going to use is 1 kilowatt, because they're all on at the same time. Now, so to, basically, from the department's standpoint, when they turn on all 10 of those light bulbs, we have to have capacity to serve them. So we have to put a 1 KW transformer up on the pole. So the customer has to pay for that based on their demand. Now, say for instance, that customer, instead of turning on all 10 light bulbs for one hour, they turn on 10 light bulbs, one light bulb at a time every hour of the day. Well, their energy use is going to be the same, but their demand is going to be .1 KW. So now the department can install a smaller transformer, we have less capacity for them, we use less, lower facilities. So basically, depending on what that customer's actual demand is, that determines how much capacity we have to have for them.
Okay.
Now, with customers that have high capacity and high energy usage, they maximize the amount of use on the facilities that we put in place for them, so we get a better return on our investment.
Is that how, for example, SCE would do it?
Yes.
That's the industry.
But it depends. But see, right now, for S...
Bottom line is, that's a typical method to negotiate with industry on a case-by-case basis.
Yes.
So it's very difficult to compare apples to apples. When you're saying, on this side of the city line, we pay X generally, which you can't say because every large industrial user might have a different rate, and then on that side, they're charging 1450 less.
But it all depends on the voltage that you have, too, so it's...
But what I'm saying is that SCE probably has individual industrial rates as well.
They do.
They do. So it's a little hard to understand the letter without knowing exactly...
What their...
What customers she's speaking of...
Well, we will research.
And what's going on in Vernon.
And...
But typically, power providers negotiate independent individual rates with large industrial...
We're going to lose Mr. Garcetti in just a moment. I wanted to poll each member to see if they wanted to take, if they were comfortable taking a vote on this today. And so why don't I start with Mr. Alarcon, if you can just let me know what your position is either way?
Well, my concern is that if we, if the intent is to change the substance of the report, when it goes to council and it requires 10 votes, depending on when it hits the council and whether members are in attendance, we might not be able to get past it.
So what's your preference here today?
I mean, ideally, my preference would be to have the Commission's new decision come before the committee and then go to council. That's normally...
Do you want me to say something about it again? This is David Hotchkiss, Assistant City Attorney. The date changes that are contemplated, the soonest date would be September 1, 2008, and then many of the dates are going to move forward in time for a full year to July 1, 2009. And it is that operative date in September that's extremely problematic. It was contemplated by my office that there would be a dual-track process here, that this committee would be advised of the new operative dates, which are no sooner than September 1, 2008, and no later than July 1, 2009, as to the operative dates for the various schedules. And I can go through them if you want right now, but there are, I'll hold this up for the Board, there's probably 25 date changes to be made in this document. That is the sum and substance of the significant modifications to be made by the Board. And if we have to delay coming back to committee and then going to the full council, and with the time delay necessary for publication, I'm very concerned that we'll run into the same problem with September 1. It would be my office's recommendation that both matters proceed in parallel track with the understanding that we will communicate the, to answer your question, Mr. Alarcon, I believe it is July the 2nd is the next Board hearing date, with the concurrence of the General Manager and the Board President. This can be placed on that agenda, and the Board can act upon it, and we can come right back to either, well, the recommendation would be come back to the full council with that, with that report.
But part of the question was, would it trigger a 10-vote requirement as opposed to an 8-vote requirement?
No, I don't believe so. It would require, if you had 12 votes on the first vote, it would not need a second reading, and then you would have a second reading anyway.
If the actions of the Commission are substantive, make substantive changes, wouldn't it require a review of the committee to avoid...
Only if we've taken a vote first. It would be, it would be an 8 on a second reading, if they've taken action and afforded to us.
It would what?
It would be an 8-person vote if it's our second reading, on a second reading.
Right. If you didn't have the 12, the first reading would go to a second reading, it would be majority of 8 both times.
All right. Why don't we, Mr. Garcetti has...
It clarified his concern.
Okay, so that clarifies your concerns? Okay, Mr. Cardenas.
No, I'm ready to vote today.
Okay, Mr. Garcetti.
My question is, you said you're still a third-party, it sounds like there's still some potential changes to what this is going to, this document will be.
The changes...
I know the dates. I got the dates.
Okay.
I'm talking about other changes relative to climate change, or boundary changes, or having a third-party review of it.
If there are any substantive differences between what we have in the current temperature zone report and once we validate it, there would be a subsequent change that would come after.
But that would be up to us, if we change something. There's not something happening automatically, basically.
Well, and it's not something happening now either. There's a process that has to be gone through, so we're talking about...
All right, let me ask the City Attorney, just incorporating some of, incorporating what Ms. Hahn has said, now how does that fall into the dual-track approach to that?
Well, the Department could be fully prepared at the next, or at the full council meeting to discuss Councilmember Hahn's concerns in terms of the comparison with Southern California Edison's rates and as to the City of Vernon. As to that matter, I can advise the body, since I do work in the rate arena, that there are only a few hundred citizens in the City of Vernon. That means that their electrical system does not have to step down to 220 volts, except for a few facilities. Everything else is served at a much higher level, which means much less infrastructure to serve at the higher voltage level, and as a result, it's cheaper to serve in the City of Vernon than it is in the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you. All right.
Very few.
If Mr. Garcetti moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cardenas seconds, and that'll be the order.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Well, do you have any no votes?
I think I still have some questions, so I know there's a rush to, so I will go ahead and vote no. I mean, I want the conservation, I want to be able to do that, but I want to also be able to explain source. So maybe we can set up a meeting between now and then, but at this point, I'll vote no.
Well, today, we'll record Ms. Grule as a no vote, and then just to confirm, Mr. Alarcon, yes vote? Okay, you want to say it, so I'm not the one who said it. Okay, Mr. Cardenas.
Clarification, Ms. Grule is asking the Department to meet with her before it goes to the floor of the council.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas is an aye vote?
Aye vote.
Okay, Mr. Garcetti, aye. Okay, all right, Ms. Grule's no vote. Okay, thank you.
Did you say aye or bye?
Bye, he said bye and aye. All right, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, number four.
Madam Chair, we request that item be noted and filed, since it relates to this item number three.
All right. We do have some cards on number four. I'll call up Billy Hayes and Solidad Garcia on number four before we take our final vote on that.
So you got all that? They're going to bring them...
Ms. Garcia and Mr. Hayes.
Okay.
How you doing? Ms. Garcia, would you like to go first?
Thank you.
Okay, keep the noise down so Ms. Garcia can be heard and Mr. Hayes can be heard. Thank you. Say your name.
Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and a few of the council people who are left. My name is Solidad Garcia. I'm with the NCL, I'm with the Oversight Committee Chair, Region 7 liaison, and also Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council Board Member. I'm speaking here today as a representative of the Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council. Our neighborhood council invited DWP to explain the new rate restructuring plan. We had expected to have provided input to the DWP Board prior to its approval. Special meetings are required to post with 24 hours' notice, insufficient time was allotted so that we could have done it. Coastal San Pedro asked DWP several questions which were unanswered. I made a long list and you've seen them. The neighborhood council voted unanimously to oppose the zoning, absolutely. Although Coastal questioned the cost increases to 2010 by tiering, the vote, the vote by the Board was to support the tiering only to encourage conservation. It was not that they were in favor of the tiering, but wanted to show that they were not going to be negative. I have, a couple of questions I'd like you to look at, and one is, how much less would the average residential power bill be if there were no tiering? I think you'll find there is a big difference, using the same increased base rates and the energy cost adjustment factor. A question that was very good that you liked was, in zoning, and this Mr. Alarcon can appreciate, we are not talking about economic hardship. We already have a lifeline and a low income. To be fair, can I finish this sentence?
Are you, yeah.
Okay. To be fair to people of limited means, why can't you create a larger band of income for them? Why not do this instead of geographic zoning?
Thank you very much, Ms. Garcia. Mr. Hayes?
Yes, my name is Billy Hayes, and I'm with the Foothill Trail District Neighborhood Council, and also a member of the Oversight Committee.
Put the microphone in front of your...
I'm here speaking on behalf of Foothill Trail District Neighborhood Council, and also that, from my experience on the Oversight Committee, there was no input to the DWP Board from the neighborhood councils because there was insufficient notification and delayed notices. This is considered a significant matter to the MOU. Therefore, on special meetings, at least 24 hours must be provided. The wording is, as soon as, as soon as practical or best effort does not satisfy the Brown Act, then we receive, when we receive 15 hours' notice for these things. The zoning of LA and the restructuring plan is not necessary. It is political ploy to make the Valley believe that they are receiving special consideration, whereas the rest of the Blue Zone community believe that they are subsidizing the rich in the Valley. The tiering is another matter. The stated goal by DWP is that it is meant to reduce waste and conserve energy. It is also meant to increase the charges of residential ratepayers. Remember that there are several components that increase the cost, base rates, energy cost adjustment, rate increases, quarterly pass-through increases, 10% city taxes, and city general fund transfers. We really would like to see the DWP come out to really do outreach. We would prefer that they would send people that are knowledgeable, who would come out and be able to answer the questions that our stakeholders have, and we've invited the DWP, and we would hope that they would really come out and send people who can answer the questions of the ratepayers, who have real serious questions about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes, thank you, Ms. Garcia, and thank you for those who... Thank you, thank you. And as a recommendation to note and file on item four...
Yes.
And without objection from our friends who are still with us, we'll make the order.
Don't follow.
All right, so we've done public comment at the beginning of the meeting and closed it then, so this marks the end of our special committee meeting. Thank you very much.